And we're going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Okay, a quick check for everyone in the audience to see if we have anyone recording this evening's meeting. Is there anyone other than the town, the town is broadcasting the meeting, anyone else recording tonight's meeting? Seeing none, thank you very much. That brings us to our public comments section of the meeting, and tonight we have the opportunity, as we do all nights, for folks to address the board, and forgive me while I very quickly pull up my notes so I get all of this right. There we go. So, our public meeting comment, excuse me, our public comment portion of the meeting is taking place now. Each attendee is welcome to speak up to three times, excuse me, three minutes at a time. Each attendee is welcome to speak up to two times. All comments will be addressed through the chair, not through other individuals. All comments must be related to a topic within the school committee's jurisdiction. As a reminder, the school committee's jurisdiction does cover the hiring, evaluation, and supervision of the superintendent, as well as the establishment of the district budget, establishment of district goals, and policies. First Amendment does allow broad constitutional speech protections, however, it has been ruled that free speech does not allow any type of threats, fighting words, or obscene content. Written comments, especially those that are longer than three minutes, may be submitted to the chair, they may be submitted tonight or after tonight, and if they are submitted tonight or after tonight, they will be shared with all members of the committee. The public comment period is a comment period, it is not a discussion. Members of the board and representatives of the schools are asked to listen and not respond to information during the public comment. It is possible that questions asked or topics raised during the public comment tonight will be addressed during tonight's school committee meeting, or potentially after the school committee meeting. And I will note that our school committee meeting does ask for a good level of respect for not only those on the board, but also those on the audience and those listening. So certainly, if we can keep our meeting in good order, that will be in everyone's best interest, and I do appreciate that. And so we'll start with anyone that would like to address the board, starting with the gentleman. Sir, if you could just, oh, sorry, I should have said this, if you could just state your name so everyone knows.
Yes, sir. Adam LeBlanc. Good afternoon, evening. Just want to go on record real quick to notify the board and everybody else who's watching at home. Murdoch currently has four students, athletes, that are currently at the Nike Invitational in Eugene, Oregon. Two of those students, Madison and Shawn Vazina, Madison Bradley and Shawn Vazina, are currently jumping right now, and our third athlete will be jumping or running tomorrow, with our last one jumping on Sunday. That would be Murphy and LeBlanc. With that being said, those students are representing the school very well with their thrive and dedication to their sport. Doing some quick, not quick, but some detailed search on our Winchton Public Schools District Curriculum Accommodation Plan, sitting in on plenty of these meetings, obviously being no stranger to any one of you on the board. The vision and statement of the Winchton Public Schools actualizes the promise of education. We feel collective responsibilities to provide the students with the opportunity for social, emotional, and academic success, ensuring each graduate is equipped with skills, knowledge, and habits to preserve and realize their unique potential. Let that sink in for a second. We believe that every individual can achieve at high levels. This belief is reflected in the highest expectations we set for students and ourselves both in schools and in the community. I would put on my opinion that we are failing not only in the schools but in the community. We share common visions of effective instruction, driven by data, educators working together, and challenging and engaging all students in every class, every day. Again, my opinion, I believe we are failing as a whole. Our district and schools support our teachers to provide each student with the support they need for academic success and personal well-being. I think I know, I think you guys know where I'm going with this, right? I believe we are all collectively failing. We share cultural possibilities, respect international, interactions among stakeholders, enable students to thrive, fostering a positive relationship with the community, and positive images of the school. Again, ladies and gentlemen of the board, I do believe we are failing collectively as a whole. I could keep going in on this document. If anybody would like to see it, it is online under the Winchton District Schools. I'm not going to insult anybody here's intelligence by keep reading this paper. There is a broken piece in the institution together collectively as a whole. We have parents arguing for their rights of their child, which they are, they should. They are the first and the most greatest successors of their children's education. We have an education system that seems to be fractured right now, and it is been Band-Aids put on, in my opinion, to hold it together. We have, again, teachers going out, but none coming in. The recent job postings have been posted, within my recollection of last meeting that I was not here but watched over and over again, that the districting plan of moving and shuffling these children around has been paused for now, which is great, so we can work on a greater, better, in a greater plan. But what about those children, or the teachers that were let go for this plan? We have knowledge of musical backgrounds, and children that have music in their backgrounds seem to strive better in reading, writing, and other aspects of their educational careers.
Mr. LeBlanc, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You've reached the three-minute limit. I'm guessing the crowd might let you continue. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board at this time? All right, thank you. Go ahead. Oh, yes. Please come up. We'll have you back, Adam.
My name is Stephen Gerard. It's my first time here, so bear with me. Coming in defense of my daughter Lana at school, since September, from September to March, she was being bullied on social media, bullied in the halls, so on and so forth. And I'm making this very short, by the way, because there is so much information here. I got a call from Mr. Shishoka, your vice principal, in December, saying that my daughter had told the teacher to F off, and that he was suspending her, which of course, I don't condone that type of behavior. But when I found out why that this was going on, I raised some questions, tried to work my best with the school. We developed a behavioral plan for my daughter, and at that meeting in December, I had asked the guidance counselor, the vice principal, the therapist, and a couple of the teachers that were there, and inquired about an IEP for my daughter. Because with the bullying, with everything else going on, her grades were slipping bad, failing. She was an emotional wreck. She was in guidance almost every day. We came up with a behavioral plan. I set rules in motion. One of those was not going to the bathroom every single class, you know, you can go in the middle, and so on and so forth. Let's fast forward to March. All these issues started coming up again. Teacher allowed my daughter to go out of class, my daughter ran into this student, words were exchanged, my daughter decided it was enough's enough, ended up getting into a fight. School rules, right? Can't get into a fight, right? Got to suspend them. That's the rule across the board. This individual happened to be a transgender individual. Let's fast forward another month. My daughter was suspended for four days for that. Same individual, same person my daughter fought, punched a girl in the face in your hallway. She was not suspended. Not suspended. No detention, no disciplinary action. And when I, you know, confronted Mr. Shishoka about this issue, I was told, well, you have to understand, there's other things involved. And I looked right at him, and I said, sir, you looked me dead in my face, and you told me that at any point in time, a student puts another hand on another student, your hands are tied, and you have to suspend that student. I says, you're borderline discriminating against my daughter at this point. You've done nothing to help the situation. So I come here today about accountability. Sure, there's other parents here who've had their child suspended for whatever reason, detentions for whatever reason. Your vice principal broke the law by not allowing my daughter back in December, who does need an IEP, by the way, we're going through that process finally now, that it took me threatening with an attorney, that it took me four months of emailing and phone calls for nothing. I still haven't got the timelines that I requested from your guidance counselor six weeks ago. However, where's the accountability for the teachers not doing these things? This man is setting his own rules in school. You have rules, and then you have his rules. Which rules do these kids follow? My daughter feels lost going into school because she has nobody to talk to. Who's she going to talk to? What's going to get done? Nothing. Nothing. And I'm a very proactive parent. Dad knows, okay, any problems come up, I am there. I will handle that problem. But it's hard for me to handle that problem when the school sees my kid more than I do. So when I do come up to this and say, hey, we're going to go this route now, we're going to do this, this, and this, and nothing happens. I simply asked for an update once a week after this problem with the teacher. An update once a week, no cellphone use. That never happened. The only time I ever got an update was when she had a bad day. That was it. I got two emails in four months after that behavioral plan was done.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. We've really, we have reached your three-minute limit, but please hang on just a moment, because there may not be anyone else that would like to speak. So, would anyone else like to address the board at this time? Okay, please.
So my thing is, we hold our children accountable. These kids are 12, 13, 14, 15 years old. What happens to the person that's up here? That's, I mean, he broke the law, right? I went to your principal and told your principal what was going on. Do you think I've had any resolve in the last three weeks after that? Nope. No resolve has come from any of these issues. They just keep sweeping it under the rug, sweeping it under the rug. And in my professional, in my professional and my personal opinion, it's a political agenda being run in your school, because you don't want to upset this group of people. So we got to treat this group of people like we're walking on eggshells. What about the other group of people? If there's rules, there's rules for everybody, not just rules for the regular students, and then there's a separate set of rules for this particular group of students. That's the new fad now. Rules are rules. Where's the accountability that we hold for our children, that you guys hold for our children in school? Suspending them for acting out, well, why is she acting out? She's been to the principal, she's been to the vice principal, she's been to the guidance counselor, a therapist. Nothing gets done. The therapist, I had to fire the therapist, the in-school therapist. I asked for a timeline, she refused to give it to me. That's all I wanted, was a basic timeline from September until now, all the stuff that's happened, no names, no nothing, but did I get that from anybody? No. The guidance counselor, the therapist. Now we're working on the principal. Nobody's helping. Nobody's doing anything. I would like some accountability personally. This school is being run like the Wild West here. You know, like, if we're going to have rules, we're going to have rules. If you expect us parents to enforce these rules, stick to them. Stick to them. If I requested an IEP in December, should I have had that IEP? If a student is having to stay after four days a week for help, and their parent says, well, why don't we try an IEP, and your vice principal, who has no, as far as I know, has no special education background, looks at me and says, no, she don't need it, right there he's in violation, right there. Yeah, it's automatic I'm supposed to get that. Your principal told me that.
Sorry, we're at our time.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Other comments? Mr. LeBlanc.
Going back on topic, with the realigning, unrealigning of the district as a whole, are those, my question, I know it can't be answered now, but it could probably be brought up the next meeting, are those teachers' contracts going to be renewed for being let go due to the reassignment of the school and the grade levels? This is a great concern, especially with the, not singling this gentleman out, but the music department. We know that music in Murdoch as a whole is a dying subject. We have a decent music education going on right now. After seeing and being at the Memorial School presentation for Memorial Day, it'd be a step back in our direction to get these kids into being musically inclined. Secondary is a great concern, and most important concern is, there's information, personal identifiable information being sent to other families about students that is very concerning. There, like this gentleman said, there should be accountability. Rumor mill, factor mill, hearsay, is this the same individual that did the investigations on a lot of the personnel in the school being relieved? I do believe that, I do believe that we should, as a community, as a board, address this situation and take another look. The school committee, and you guys are the end-all, be-all on the hire or fire of teachers, superintendents, special education instructors, substitutes, bus drivers, et cetera, I believe we, as a whole, should demand to look at these again, and to fine-toothpick line by line on the failures and everything else, and what was remediation for those people being let go? Was there remediation? Because if there's no remediation, and they're just getting shit canned to be called, sorry, everyone should be here. If you're being fired to be fired, then there's no explanation, then there's something wrong, and we need to address that. Because we, as parents, we're going to support you whether we like it or not, because we want the education for our children. But we also have to, as parents, school board, teachers, everything else, because I think, I'm not bashing teachers, I think they're doing a hell of a job of what they're doing. And what they've done through the last five years, phenomenal. Can't praise them enough. But what we're doing to them, the students and everything else, is just causing chaos. We need to stop the bleeding, treat the wounds, and readjust, refocus. There shouldn't be a witch hunt. I'm sure all of you have been at wit's end with this witch hut that's going on. We need to address it, we need to solve it, and we need to move forward, or else we're going to be here every, every meeting with the same issues. And that's all I have to say. I thank you for your time, thank you for doing what you're doing. I know it's not easy, but somebody has to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the, from the hall? Yes?
Good evening. Thank you for your time. My name is Samantha Olivera. At the last school committee meeting, it was quite clear and later confirmed by a shared email that Nicole Herro would be put on leave pending in a district investigation. It is my understanding that rather than Nicole Herro being put on leave pending an investigation by the district, she went on FMLA within days of the last school committee meeting, which makes me ask the question, who approved Nicole's Herro's FMLA? Not only does this keep us from correcting her incompetence, but it also keeps us from hiring a new director of pupil services. Now we are all, now we are at a stalemate. We are going to, what is going to be done to fix our special education department? We shouldn't expect our remaining staff to clean up the mess Nicole has left behind. Adding more work for teachers and staff is not a reasonable request. I ask that we consider bringing someone to meet with all parents in a forum to discuss how things will be addressed. Maybe have individual parent meetings to detail a child-specific plan of action. Bring in outside evaluators to coordinate testing over the summer. Request Desi's approval to host partial member team meetings over the summer to get IEPs completed before the fall. We need to get protocols in place to protect information. I believe our district also needs to create a hiring plan for vacancies and assess para-staff placement. We should be creating an SEL plan for training staff. I feel that it has been proven that Nicole Herro is not capable of doing her job. However, within days, Nicole Herro was approved for her FMLA. The timing of all this is suspicious. At the last school committee meeting, Nicole stated that she doesn't have enough staff with just one assistant and two secretaries. Let me remind you, Suzanne Michelle and Kathy Brooks not only ran the sped department, they were our sped department, and they also ran the pre-K program. Nicole acknowledged non-compliance at the last school committee meeting, and instead of an apology to parents, she threw her staff under the bus. She also listed TeachTown as one of her achievements since she's been here. Folks, that program was introduced under Suzanne Michelle during our remote learning period. Nicole had nothing to do with that. Nicole shared how a few non-verbal students received technology with communication apps. She stated that, she stated this like she was doing parents a favor. It is, if a child needs that to access the curriculum, then she is required to provide that. It felt like she was looking for a pat on the back for doing a portion of her job. Mr. King and Nicole Herro mentioned a new model, and that it will need time to work. Why exactly do we need a new model? Have any of you read our special education TFM audit from May 2021? If not, I have brought copies. The audit was done a month before our previous director of pupil services, Suzanne Michelle, was let go. We were 100% compliant, but we let her go. 23 years of dedicated service to our staff and students and families, and 100% compliant, but we let her go. She also had no PRS complaints with Desi. Mr. King didn't like her, and it wasn't because she couldn't do her job. However, he has kept Nicole Herro. Mr. King worked with Suzanne Michelle for two years. Therefore, Mr. King knows what excellence looks like, yet he kept Nicole Herro. These are not parent opinions, these are facts. You cannot dispute Desi evaluations. I have lost faith in Mr. King's ability to make staffing choices. I ask that you please investigate the pattern of Mr. King's hiring and firing at non-renewals. If possible, I also ask that you speak with those who have received non-renewal or have been terminated under Mr. King. There are two sides to every story, and we need more information. I ask for a vote of no confidence in Mr. King. He knew and still knows Nicole Herro was non-compliant, and he knew about requests from Desi that were ignored by Nicole Herro. He covered for her incompetence for two years. That's indifference, and that should be grounds for removal.
Ms. Olivera?
Yes, sir.
Let me please pause you for one second, just to check. Would anyone else like to address the board at this time? Thank you, please go ahead.
I also want to address another concern. Mr. Vine, I respectfully request that you consider stepping down from your position on the school committee. Sir, I feel you have lost touch with your students and their families. I ask that you imagine someone broke into your home and stole everything, something very precious to you. Now imagine you had that thief on video. You know who stole and what was stolen. But when you tried to explain this to investigators, they shook their heads, rolled their eyes, and shouted at you from across the table. How would that make you feel? Would you be frustrated because you weren't being heard? Would you be so angry that something so precious to you had been stolen? This is how our families are feeling. Nicole Herro stole our children's educations for the last two years. Parents were frustrated, and you weren't sympathetic to that frustration. You were intolerant of it. That is not why you were elected, sir. As I have said before, I am 15 years into our special ed journey, folks, and I have seen, I have never seen anything like what is going on in our district. We need to do everything we can to make sure we are not put in this situation again. In closing, I respectfully request the removal of Mr. King and Nicole Herro. Our district has fallen apart under their watch, and it's time to cut our losses and find administrators who are both competent and committed.
Thank you, Ms. Olivera. Other comments?
At the last school committee meeting, Mr. King spoke to the different colleges that seniors had been accepted into, and kind of that timeline. And although there's probably not a bigger supporter of kids going to big D1 schools than me, because that is my kid's goal, unfortunately, but I think you can directly correlate the graduating class this year with the timeline of when Summit was begun as well. And we hear a lot about how Summit isn't a great program from a lot of parents, probably some in this room, because once they get into high school, they're not using the same program. And they go back to pen and paper, if you will. But what I find interesting is that the skills that you attain from Summit carry them throughout the next four years of high school, whether they complete the work the same way online in an online platform or not. So Summit, also Mrs. Vazina's thing that she brought in, should be looked at to further continue. And two, I don't believe you have anybody else in the middle school that is certified to run Summit next year, because you got rid of the one staff that actually did it. So, bring back Vazina.
Thank you. Others? Other comments for the school committee, just checking, double-checking, triple-checking? Okay, not seeing any. We will continue. We, that brings us to the portion of our agenda that is our consent agenda. Our only consent agenda item tonight is the minutes from May 4th. The minutes are in your packet, and were emailed to you some time ago. Happy to take a motion on the minutes if there is one.
Mr. Chair.
Greg?
I'd move to approve the minutes of May 4th, 2023 school committee meeting as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sorry about that. Thank you for the second. Any discussion on the minutes? Okay, those in favor, or excuse me, let's do the vote. Alicia?
Yeah.
Greg?
Aye.
David?
I abstain.
Abstain. Karen?
I abstain.
And the chair votes aye, so 3-0-0. Nope, 3-0-2, sorry. All right, thank you very much. That brings us to our superintendent's report, and I think the first item up is the special education department update.
Sure, thank you. Just a quick update on special education, since our director of student support is on leave. We have had a few folks step up and help support the special education department over this past week, where the focus has really been to ensure that our scheduled meetings and evaluations take place prior to the end of the year. They're already scheduled, and at this point, we are confident that those will take place as scheduled. We've been making an effort to reach out directly to every family that has meetings scheduled, to contact them personally with phone calls, and ensure that those meetings, just let them know that the meetings are still on track. You know, we have all the folks in place to run those meetings as we would have prior to Ms. Haru being on leave. And at this point, we feel very comfortable that those will all take place before the end of the year if they were scheduled to do as such. The email address that we put up, specialeducation@winchtonk12.org, for any families that had questions or concerns, is actively being monitored. At this point, I think we've had a couple of emails come into that email address, so if parents had questions about their meetings, about their IEPs, about their evaluations, whatever that is, and weren't sure where to contact, those are being directed to the special education email, at which point we do have someone responding to those emails or making the phone calls, whatever happens to be appropriate relative to the communication. So at this point, that's what we are doing for special education, as far as a department, is making sure at this, right now, that we finish the year strong in terms of making sure all the meetings are met, all the deadlines are met, and evaluations take place.
Questions? I'll have a, I'll ask a question. Oh, yes, Karen, go ahead. In addition to the meetings, obviously the meetings are being covered, it sounds like the plan, it sounds like those things are continuing. As far as the responsiveness to requests for paperwork, some of those things that Ms. Haru told us have been a challenge in the past, how do, where do those stand now?
So it depends on the paperwork. Obviously, some of that is special education specific, some of it is not, quite frankly. So if it comes to paperwork specifically required for some of the meetings, I'll acknowledge that- I'll acknowledge that a lot of that, uh, some of that I've been doing personally, uh, have reached out to a few of the families who, I think, are here or have been here in the past requesting some of those files. Um, I've communicated with those families and done everything we can do to get those into their hands. Um, so to date, that's how, what's been out there, that's how it's been handled. Um, you know, I believe in communication with some of those families that I, I think that they've received everything that we have, that I'm able to offer. Um, you know, again, I can't offer something that we truly don't have in a file, uh, but at this point, we have made every effort to get those files. The exception at this point is still, you know, the ongoing piece, which is a little bit, I think, separate from what you're asking, but I'll use this opportunity to cover it, is, um, emails and processing emails as a part of student records, which I don't necessarily consider, you know, a special education issue. It's a separate piece, which is just a student's records request. Um, as I've mentioned in here, uh, I think prior, we are, you know, really inundated, if you will, in a manner of speaking with the volume of, sort of the number of quests against the volume of emails associated with a particular email account. So, um, I did email out, uh, assurance, letters of assurance to families today that they will receive those um, on a first-come, first-served basis. And what I mean by that is, in the order in which those requests came into the district, um, we are processing those in the same order to go out, so first-in, first-out type of thing. Um, and we are contracting with a company for those services to electronically redact all the names out of emails, um, so that we can get those to the, to the families. We just don't have the manpower to, um, go through, I don't know, six thousand or more emails, um, to do the redactions, so. Um, we are at this point squared away on that and we're committed to that deadline. Some folks should receive those much more quickly than others based on, um, when they submitted their requests.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Karen?
Okay, so, um, so that's your entire special ed update.
That's my update.
Okay. Um, so I have a few questions, um, regarding, you say, I I understand that you say there's an email address out there for parents to, that is being monitored. Who's monitoring it?
Uh, our assistant special education director.
Okay, and so is she going to be the person that we will be holding accountable for all the timelines and everything going forward at this point, right now?
At this point, we have a special education director or a student support director who is on leave and that person is still, in general, the person that's accountable. That is the person who is in that position and still maintains accountability.
Well, she's on leave, so I mean.
Doesn't dissuade anything from her accountability. Right now, the special education, assistant special education director is monitoring those emails and making sure that everything is responded to.
I find that interesting because if, if somebody's on leave for, under whatever leave they're under.
Mm-hmm.
Um, she's not the person that's going to be contacted by Desi directly.
She will not. Our assistant special education director will be and I will most likely be copied on such an email.
Right, so in this case, Caitlin Smith is the one that is going to be contacted by Desi if there's a timeline or whatever. Okay, thank you. So that was the answer I was looking for, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Um, also, um, so is she the one that's running most of these team meetings now?
Uh, the meetings have stayed constant with who was running those in the first place, quite frankly. I think there's been one exception to this point, so, um, Caitlin Smith has been running a number of meetings, as she has always been. Uh, I think she's been primarily focused and, you know, again, I'm not a hundred percent on this in terms of knowing who is running which meetings. But when we met, um, the following week, we went through who runs which meetings, which ones have gaps, and where do we need to fill? Um, for the most part, Caitlin Smith, uh, continued running the meetings she was already scheduled for. There were a couple, um, I believe two, off the top of my head, that, um, Ms. Haru was responsible for running. And at this point, uh, one has already taken place. Um, and that was, uh, run by an agreed-upon individual and qualified individual. Um, and the other, I believe, takes place tomorrow and Caitlin will be running that meeting.
Okay, um, and so we have, I I did receive the PRS, um, report that you got two weeks ago and you sent it to me yesterday.
Yep.
Um, and you sent it only to me, which I would have.
Requested it, so I sent it to you, yes.
Right, I understand, but I would have liked you to send it to the whole board, but whatever, that's fine. Um, my concern is that I don't see the incidents and and we can get into the semantics of incidents versus complaints versus how they qualify. Um, I know that this is not outlining all of the incidents that have been reported because we have had parents send to this board as a whole and to you some of these incidents. So I don't know how we figure out where the delay is in getting those from Desi in this report.
I, I don't have insight into that.
Okay.
That's the report that Desi sent at our request to send us a PRS report for the incidents that have been submitted, the complaints that have been submitted, whatever language you want to use. That is what was returned to us from Desi. I, I don't have control over what they respond with. I can tell you that on the date on that particular response, if I'm not mistaken, I'm not looking at it, but I believe the report was run on, I think, June first, I think it says six one in the corner.
Right, yeah, I can't get this to open right now. Um, we know I am not apple-friendly. Um, however, you get the incident reports as soon as they are, the incident uploads as soon as they are generated to Desi. They get you, a copy sent to you.
Yeah, the, the PRS complaint, it is assigned a number and that's the process, yep.
Right, so what I would like to ask is that I need to know how you, we need to know how you are addressing those in, while Nicole's on leave because Caitlin Smith doesn't necessarily have the background to be dealing with that. And as much as I understand that you say Nicole is monitoring things, she is on leave.
No, I did not say she's monitoring things, that, that is not what I said.
Okay, so how are you addressing that?
The complaints that come in don't always just go to, you know, the, the, the student support director. So as an example, if something comes in relative to the high school, it would not be out of line for the Department of Education to actually reach out to that person directly for a first-level response. Um, they often take a statement from an employee that that might be mentioned and I'm not, I'm gonna work to really avoid names or even scenarios, but, you know, that's a very common piece. Um, so it really depends, it, it, to be honest, it just depends on the nature of the, um, complaint that is registered with Desi as to who, how they proceed, um, in their first steps. Um, they oft, they, not oftentimes, they can't at times hear a response. We can provide them with, I don't know, I'm just trying to be simple, uh, uh, an email or something that was sent to a, a family, something to that end, and they might just close that case, um, based on just the response and it, it, it goes no further. Um, so it really just depends on the level of escalation, what that happens to be and so on. At this point, I'm in contact with our, um, our Desi sort of point person, I guess you would call them, I'm not sure what their title is. Um, it's a mouthful. Um, but I speak with her regularly just to monitor and make sure that we are on pro- on process with whatever those might be and work with whoever the correct people are within the district to get the responses back to the department, um, in a timely fashion.
Okay, because I know that there are several people that may not be here tonight that have spoken openly at these meetings, that still have open complaints within the, within the district and I'm concerned that they are not, their, their responses have not been handled. So I do think that I am concerned that we are not. We are not addressing them, so I, I need to know, like, who is, I, I know ultimately the buck stops with you as our, as our superintendent. So I'm holding you accountable because you are the person I need to hold accountable at this point. So I need to know what you are doing to make sure that these cases are actually meeting, you know, you're getting these responses back and you're dealing with what needs to be dealt with because at this point, you know, whether it's, and I'm, I'm just gonna give an example. I'm not saying that these are any of the cases, so let me be clear, I'm just gonna make something up right now, okay? It's not anybody that we've had in front of us. So let's say we have a student who, um, lost services because of service provided, let's say, an SLP because we know we don't have enough of those, okay?
Great, great example.
Okay, so we missed SLP services and because of that, a complaint was filed, so we owe SLP services, so. And we dropped the ball and whatever, and you need to make sure those services are made up and, and for whatever reason, we're in the midst of that. So I need to make sure that you are going forward with making sure that that is going to happen.
Yes, I mean, that's a great example, by the way, I mean, it's a real example. Uh, we've talked about it in here many times, right? So it, to use that example, if I may, um, you know, that would come into Desi as a, you know, whatever the, um, whomever it is that registers that, that complaint, um, that goes to Desi through some.
Let's use me.
Okay.
I'm, I'm the bad person, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm the.
So Ms. Cass submitted a, a, an SLP complaint, that goes to Desi. Now, I, I have no idea, you know, what their timelines are. I know it's an electronic process at this point, which changed in two thousand eighteen, um, where they've made that electronic. So that would get to submitted to Desi. I have no idea what their turnaround time is, I don't know how that works. That would then come into us to sort of say, hey, you know, are you aware of this? Have you addressed, you know, what, what's your sort of very quick response? That might be a phone call, they might call and ask, they might, uh, send an email to say, could you reach out to us? We'd just like to hear, you know, sort of a, a very cursory response to hear about how do we can proceed with that. So, uh, maybe in that scenario, let's use that as an example that we haven't worked with the family at all. We haven't worked with you at all, um, on trying to provide some sort of compensatory services or alternative services or whatnot, right? And, and that's all we can say back to Desi. Gosh, we didn't know this child wasn't receiving services, um, our fault. Um, Desi would likely then, and this isn't, I'm relaying this as if that, this is a quick, hey, how you doing? It's not, this is over, obviously, multiple emails. Well, I just, you may know, but not everybody knows.
I know.
So, um, this might go on over a course of a number of emails, uh, at which point we acknowledge in that scenario, didn't realize that wasn't happening, parents correct, um, they'll respond. What are your compensa- how are you gonna address it? What are your compensatory services? We would respond with whatever, whatever that is. Desi then takes time to review our response, puts together a, um, a decision slash response to the, to you and to us to notify either you were out of compliance, not out of compliance. If there's a, a number of items within the complaint, they will actually go through and enumerate those. Some of those things they don't have purview over and they don't address, so on and so forth. Um, but in this instance, we would have submitted to them, um, you know, how we would deliver those compensatory services. That would be shared with both, both instances and they would likely quote-unquote, "close" that case um, with a note, as you saw in that piece in the margin.